Planning Commission meeting. I just wanted to let everyone know that out there that's watching, that we are on local channel 27 and PCT's website viewing this live. We have several people in attendance, probably more to come. And I'm just wanting to let you know that we will have a public comment for the items that are listed on the agenda. Chair Benjamin will direct those public comments periods. And I will help him allow each member of the public to speak for the three minute duration. If that's pretty much it, and I will pass it over to Chair Benjamin to officially start our meeting tonight.
Thank you, Bridgette. Good evening. I hope everyone's enjoying the several lighting of warmth for a winter evening. Why don't we, if you would, rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance as we call the meeting to order?
Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America.
For Richard Pans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Bridgette, could we please help acknowledging Commissioner Hold is not here?
Commissioner Polgar?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
I am present.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Reddick?
I think he's here, but he's muted.
I'm sorry. He is here. I'm sorry about that.
I apologize.
Chair Benjamin?
I'm here.
And Holt is absent at this point, but will possibly join us later this evening.
Okay, thank you. The first item on our agenda is the consideration of the minutes of our last meeting on November 24th. I provided a set of changes that I was requesting that are in the response to Commissioner's comments. I wonder if there are any other changes or if you had any concerns about those changes, colleagues? If not, could I have a motion to approve with those changes?
My move, we approve the November 24th minutes with the changes Chair Benjamin is pointing us to.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Polgar. Roll call vote, Bridgette.
Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reddick?
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin?
Yes.
Commissioner Passes?
Thank you. You know, in some of these kinds of things, we ought to be able to take a vote by holding up our hands. If everybody's got a video, I wonder if that's a permissible simplification. I don't know. All right. The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. This is a time when anyone who is participating in the meeting, who would like to speak with the planning commission, well, to the planning commission, on a subject which is not on our agenda for tonight, to address us on anything at all, is free to do so. So Bridgette, do we have any indications that anyone would like to speak to us?
I have none.
Has anyone written that they want to write to us?
I've seen nothing. I will refer to Jill and see if she has anything, but I have nothing for public comment.
No one is hammering on my door, so I open and close. Oh, I'm sorry.
I do have one person that just raised their hand as you were just about to grab your purse like that.
All right.
And I'm not sure that, they may have come in a little late, so I'm not sure that they may be wanting to talk about the specific topic and not general public comment, but I will.
We can revisit this item. If you need a moment to work with them to figure out whether that hand went up to speak during public comment, or is it just someone who just joined us?
Just someone who just joined us, I believe, and has his hand raised. Let me just double check. It's Pat Black? Pat, you can.
Yes.
Did you want to speak for general comment?
Actually, no, I wanted to speak on.
Item?
Item on.
Project. Okay, that's fine. We're just getting to that, so I'll open up a public comment for that. All right, I'll put you back. Thanks.
Yeah, this is just for something that's not an agendized item for tonight's meeting. But thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be looking forward to your comments then. In that case, the public comment period stands closed. And we'll continue on to our public hearing items, or item in this case. And the item, of course, is the, first item is the application for assigned permit. And Scott will tell us all about it. Oh, I'm sorry, Jill will tell us all about it.
Tonight, I will take that one, Chair Benjamin. Thank you. Scott has been very, very busy working on Carter Park and being ready for your prime time show tonight for that item. This item that you saw, two banners back in September for the corner of Main and Kelly. I do not have a presentation prepared. I'm happy to share screen with the proposed banner. It's in your packet. But the proposal is to add a third banner on the Kelly Street frontage. That is with the theme of the former gas station site. In this case, it's the Half Moon Bay Coast Siders Car Club. I can vouch for the popularity of these banners. My particular desk at City Hall has a fabulous view of this wall. And I'm, every day I watch people take selfies with the Clunia brothers. And people just are really delighted to have something kind of fun to do on that corner right now, with the understanding that it's temporary because we do have an active development application on that corner. So with that, we would think that probably three is about right. And I'm not anticipating the applicant to come in with any more. We'll let you know if he does. But your municipal code and the sign code requires the planning commission to be the body that reviews banners. And this was more than a minor change for the permit. I can approve minor changes. But this was, this was kind of bigger than that. So that's why it's back. If you have questions, please let me know. And otherwise, we'd encourage you to make a motion if you support this additional banner.
Since it's a public hearing item, let me just invite first colleagues, did you have any clarifying questions on the item before we open the public hearing? Seeing none. In that case, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask Bridgette whether there are anyone who would like to address us, beginning with the applicant if they wish to.
Um.
No pressure. If they don't, that's fine, too.
I think we're good.
But the record shows that Commissioner Holt has joined us.
Yes, that's what I was just gonna make a comment about. And also, I have no one for public comment.
All right, go and go and gone. We are closing the public comment period on this item and bringing it back to the commission. Brian, we have not started the park item yet, but you're late on the staff presentation. You may want to sit this one out. I don't know. This is the sign matter. We could catch you up on that very detailed presentation we got from Jill. All right, colleagues, what are your thoughts?
I like it. I'm in favor of it. I don't have any other comments.
All right, I'm seeing nods. I think it might not be too much of a reading request from the chair to see if you can put your thought in the form of a motion.
My move, we approve the sign permit, or is it a, is the sign?
Resolution.
Permit or, yeah, the resolution.
Resolution next in order, if that's a way.
Next in order, yes.
Very official. Is there a second?
Sorry, I don't have everything up because of the power outage. I've realized I should have reorganized.
All good. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Thank you, Chair Reddick. Roll call vote, please. Bridgette?
Commissioner? Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Mr. Holt? Or is he not going to vote? He may not?
I'm gonna abstain. Thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reddick?
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin?
Yes.
Commissioner Passes?
All right, we made quick work on that. We'll look forward to seeing the next mural. The next item is the project to adopt a mitigated neg deck and program. It's the park item. Let's just make it, make it quick. And Jill, do I throw this to you as well? All right, kick us off.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Benjamin and Commission. Our staff is very pleased to be here tonight to bring Carter Park for a coastal development permit and CEQA review. And I'm only here just to introduce your presenters, your staff presenters, because we have a little bit of a different format than we normally do. There is a significant team of consultants who are also attendees. And we are prepared to answer questions from soup to nuts on this item. So we just want you to know that. But first tonight, Karen Decker from the City Manager's Office, she's a senior management analyst. And this is her project. She's a project manager working this through all the different aspects of project management for a city project. And then Scott Phillips, our associate planner, is the project planner for this. And he is the contact and point person for your coastal development permit, compliance with the LCP, as well as the CEQA oversight and all the other entitlements. Karen's going to present first. And in some, some parts of the presentation are really to review some things that you've seen already, just to make sure everyone is same paged again. Because this, this Carter Park project has, has been through your shop through a study session. But there's, there's been many other points of contact and she will cover that. And then Scott will give you the style of presentation that you are used to from your staff planners for making sure that we present everything you need to see. And you will have your traditional time for asking clarifying questions, which is once I can field those as well as our consultants. We hope to have folks come, come forward for the public hearing and then you will have plenty of time for deliberation. And so with that, I'd like to go ahead and Karen, you might want to queue up. She's got the presentation and she's going to be the maestro. Karen, welcome to the planning commission again. I know they're happy to see you and take it away.
What she said, Karen. Welcome.
Well, thank you for that warm welcome and good evening, everybody. Good evening, Chair Benjamin, planning commissioners and community members. I just want to thank and acknowledge the planning commission for your time and attention this evening and reviewing this application, as well as the thoughtful input that you provided last July in 2019 regarding the study session that Jill referenced. It directly informed the final design and we really appreciate it. I also want to acknowledge the amount of time and professional expertise which has carried us to this point. We've assembled a team of experts, many of whom I'm pleased to say are on the call. We have ELS Architecture and Urban Design, David Powers and Associates, and H.T. Harvey and Associates. I also want to acknowledge the stakeholder groups and community members whose participation and engagement made this project design possible. And also, as Jill mentioned, I'm a senior management analyst within the City Manager's Office. And that we have a chance in this office to work on a wide variety of projects. And we absolutely could not have ushered this through without the expertise from Department of Public Works and Community Development, which had really helped us guide this project in conformance with the local coastal plan and CEQA. So thank you very much for all the critical stakeholders that made this possible. So planning commission is no stranger to the Parks Master Plan. It was finalized in 2018 and adopted at the beginning of 2019. And part of the plan emphasized improvements to the existing parks within Half Moon Bay. And so as part of the fiscal year 2018-19 budget and CIP Capital Improvement Program hearings, council prioritized Carter Park and kind of gave the green light to proceed with design and entitlements. So as you could see on this slide under vision, the intention for the park was to create a more actively utilized cultural events park with improvements to greater opportunities for performances and day camps. So after giving the green light, staff delved into that with our consultants. And we, our goal in all of this is to make this project shovel ready with all of our entitlements teed up. And we have staff for exploring funding opportunities. Most recently, Proposition 68, which is a $4 billion California bond measure that recognizes disparities in park access. And so one umbrella under, one program under that umbrella is the statewide parks program. And so we hope to be a competitive applicant for that funding in 2021. So following council direction, city engaged experts for all the applicable technical studies, I won't read them. You could, you could read faster than I could talk. But we're proud of the experts that have been around the table ushering this project. There's been extensive outreach throughout this project and, and wide ranging community input. ELS Architecture along with staff launched a robust community outreach campaign towards the end of 2018 and into 2019. And so this timeline shows just the highlights of some of those efforts, starting with our most popular, popularly attended music festival, the Summers End Music Festival in September of 2018. I did highlight one Parks and Recreation Commission meeting in November because that was a substantive concept plan and design workshop. But I also want to say that the Parks Master Plan Implementation Update is a regular line item at the Parks and Recreation Commission. And so whether John Doughty from Public Works or staff from ELS or myself, would just routinely provide updates to Parks and Rec Commission, soliciting their input, keeping them abreast of updates. And a captive audience kind of within those commission meetings are the Friends of Half Moon Bay Parks and Recreation. So just kind of as an added benefit, it was nice to hear that nonprofit fundraising arm and to ensure that they were also viewing all the progress as well as just the general public that would attend. And then we had focused stakeholder groups with neighboring groups, neighboring in terms of proximity to the park, as well as frequent users, namely our theatrical and repertory groups. So definitely prioritize getting their input, whether it be park utilization ideas or concerns about upgrades. And then, of course, we updated the city council on numerous occasions. I've listed a couple of them here. And then Scott will do a deeper dive with more project details regarding what came out of that July 23rd study session with planning commission. This is just very similar information just presented in another way. It's another cross section of the outreach participants that weighed in to the pre-concept design all the way up to the final design. In addition to those focus groups and community events and civic engagement opportunities, we also held, offered a community survey, both online and in paper. It yielded over 100 responses and overall there was enthusiastic support for the project. And again, those responses informed the design. Some highlights that came from that community survey, as well as those qualitative stakeholder group meetings, were these top community preferences in order. So overwhelmingly, there was support and interest for more musical performances. That was shortly followed by just places to relax, to eat your lunch, to potentially picnic with your family. And then several people expressed interest in having a place within walking distance in downtown where parents or grandparents or caregivers could take young children. So along with those preferences in terms of park elements, we also solicited feedback regarding any community concerns. And so while this isn't a comprehensive list, these were our usual suspects in terms of the feedback that we fielded. We had parking concerns somewhat related to traffic, noise concerns, trash, and general concerns around safety. So, and other technical concerns followed, but again, I think Scott will do a deeper dive on that later in the presentation. Regarding parking, that was largely from the nearby neighborhood. There was concerns about potential parking overflow. So just to evaluate those potential impacts, city conducted a parking study during multiple peak times. We also commissioned a professional noise study that was conducted by Charles M. Salter and Associates. And regarding safety, there was correspondence between city and San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, which had recommended safety enhancements that we are prepared to address. They also had general feedback that with increased park amenities, that would likely lead to greater public use. And with greater use, that would in turn potentially improve park safety and discourage undesirable activities. So the new design elements, these are the design elements that were presented to the planning commission and study session last July. And the design took into account use of the existing park topography. I won't go through each item individually, but this, here it is in list form. And just put another way, this final design was the culmination of all the technical studies, the community and stakeholder feedback, planning commission, park commission, and city council review. And we'd like to think that it connects people to the natural resources in a way that is in line with the environmental values that make the coast such a special place. And again, here's another rendering from ELS in terms of the project description. You see here a depiction of the amphitheater style seating, that middle section that would be for picnicking or a lawn, a lawn area potentially for dancing if there was a performance going on at the stage. You see the support building to the left of the stage, as well as the accessible path. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Scott Phillips, associate planner, who will walk us through the highlights of the coastal development permit and the environmental review. Scott?
Thanks, Karen and Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. Nice to see everyone this evening. I'm gonna go into a little more detail on the, the project description to start out with. And as you can see on the, as you can see, the slide includes the site plan for proposed improvements and which include the stage, as well as the play area off to the right, picnic area, restroom concession building, seating with a flat area between the seating and stage, and then a solidarity, the solidarity trail that wraps around the new stage. Now, the permits requested include a coastal development permit, use permit, architectural review, and parking exception. And as far as noticing for tonight's meeting, we sent out notices to all the neighbors within 300 feet. We posted the site, posted City Hall, the website, as well as published a notice in the Half Moon Bay Review. And the footprints of both the stage and the new building have been staked on site. Now, as far as this slide includes the western portion of the project, which includes a new park entry sign, built-in seat wall, previous pavers along Main Street, and improvement to the existing sidewalk along the parking lot edge. And the overall footprint of these improvements would not expand at all. It's refurbishing existing. Now, Karen touched upon this earlier, that kind of the, the primary purpose of this project is to provide for programming and events that can take place at Carter Park on an ongoing basis. And so that's part of what's included with the project is the actual use, the sort of intensified use of the park, as well as maintenance. This slide includes the colors and materials. And notice that they are, the overall theme is earth toned and natural. And the idea is that the, you know, the, the new permits would blend or be compatible with the redwood trees that currently surround the southern part of the park. This slide includes the north elevation of the proposed stage, which is, the top height is 20 feet. And notice the earth toned nature of the exterior materials, as I mentioned, shown in the last slide. And the stage actually has two windows on the side, too, that open to the, to the back. This slide shows the elevations for the, the new restroom and concession building. And a question came up earlier about the roof and whether or not that would be accessible to the public. And the answer is that half of it is, there's a observation platform with built-in seating on half of it. And the other half would be set aside for rooftop landscape. This slide includes the landscape plan. And what I tried to do is emphasize the riparian buffer edge in green. It's a 50-foot riparian buffer from the edge of riparian vegetation. And you'll notice that the only improvements that are within the buffer, with the help of the planning commission, with guidance from the planning commission in the last study session, is the solidarity trail. Now, there is a, the existing ADA ramp that encroaches into the riparian buffer, but that would remain as is. Now, the brown line that I emphasize here shows the proposed split rail fencing. It would be added roughly along the buffer edge. And the idea of putting in the split rail fencing was supported by the project biologists. And the idea is that that would funnel folks down to the solidarity trail as opposed to walking around the entire buffer. Plants included with the, within the plant pallet are all drought tolerance. Drip irrigation would be included in compliance with our our irrigation chapter of the municipal code. Now, as far as analysis, a couple of key points for the commission to consider. Compliance with the general plan, land use plan, zoning, compatibility with the Parks Master Plan and downtown specific plan, the overall design of the proposed improvements, as well as adequacy of the CEQA document. Now, as far as the general plan and land use plan, the proposed park improvements are visitor-serving in nature, but would obviously be, you know, cater to the residents as well. Now, as you know, we have, you know, many policies to draw upon in our land use plan that support visitor serving. So we're confident that this is in compliance with the land use plan. We also feel that the solidarity trail is an allowed use within the buffer. And I emphasize that, that trails and scenic overlooks on public lands are on the line. Now, as far as zoning, the site is within a planned unit development, therefore also a visual resource area. The project has been designed, the approach is to, that it would enhance the visual resource area of Carter Park and the surrounding riparian area. And the building footprints have been staked to show where the new buildings would go. And as far as use permits, that's been requested. The purpose of that is that the proposed improvements would intensify the use of the existing park within the PUD. Therefore, a use permit is required. And we feel that the proposed improvements would not be a detriment to the public, but actually beneficial. As you can see, it's not possible to provide additional off-street parking on site, given the slope constraints, the proximity to the creek, the unique shape of the lot and the access. Therefore, in order to intensify the park, a parking exception is needed. Given the unique site constraints, we believe that the planning commission can support the findings required for the parking exception. And the parking study that was prepared that Karen mentioned did identify available parking downtown within, during busy weekends in the past. So we feel that there is parking available for, you know, for events to take place, you know, during good weather times. And then we're, we're also, the project includes more bicycle parking than what normally is required. As a matter of fact, double than what is needed. And we're confident that all the bike parking will be used during events and possibly more. Now, as far as the master plan and specific plan, the Parks Master Plan, the project would implement one of the top priorities identified in the Parks Master Plan. And as Karen mentioned, this, this came up time and time again during the public outreach for the Parks Master Plan for improvements to Carter Park and to provide, you know, allow for more events to take place there. Also, the project would complement the downtown Half Moon Bay by providing an improved experience at Carter Park. Increasing attempts to the park in particular during events would benefit businesses within the commercial core. Now, everybody's favorite, as far as CEQA goes, in order to assure that any significant adverse impacts to special status species would be avoided, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared that includes mitigation measures related to light and glare impacts as well as biological resources. Now, our CEQA consultant, David Powers, recommended a 30-day public review period instead of the 20-day. And we circulated the draft environmental document to the state clearinghouse. Notices took place on site at City Hall, similar to tonight's meeting. Notices were sent out to the neighbors, posted on our website, published in the HME review, posted at the county clerk's office. We are only required by CEQA to do two of these. We did them all. And we didn't receive any note, any comments related to the adequacy of our CEQA document. Now, one of the key parts of the environmental document was the biological resources section. And in an early phase during this, the design of this project, we reached out to HT Harvey and had them prepare a resource map that identifies the location of the edge of the riparian vegetation, sensitive habitat within the area to identify where the riparian buffer actually exists. And then, you know, we brought this project to the planning commission on study session. We discussed the riparian buffer and designed the project to be in compliance with this requirement. Mitigation measures, reducing potential impacts to bioresources related to light and construction are included in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program as well as conditions of approval. We also circulated a memorandum this afternoon to the planning commission modifying one of the mitigation measures integrating a threshold for potential light, light review of the light study. And then another key part of the environmental document was the acoustic analysis. And noise, a noise study was done within Carter Park during the Shakespeare Festival. And that's what the slide includes is the, where the point data was, was taken from. You know, further questions on light, noise, our CEQA consultant is logged in this evening as well as our biological consultant. As far as design, our architect is here this evening as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions and, you know, and our consultants are here as well.
All right, Scott, thank you very much for the, or colleagues. Are there any clarifying questions on the project that you would like to ask before we open the public comment period on the site?
I have no questions.
Yes, Commissioner Reddick.
Thank you, Scott. Exciting to see the progress in this project. You mentioned in the, in the memo this afternoon, the past use of ADA parking places at the shopping center there. And I, to be honest, I forget the number. Did you? Does anyone know how many of those have been used during events? And which hopefully would be available in the future?
The chair notices that Matthew seems to have a lot to say about that. So if it's all right with you, I'll recognize Matthew Scott to speak to that.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I can answer that. It's actually not the shopping center parking spaces that were used, but the Stone Pine Business Park, which is to the east of the shopping center. And there are four full standard ADA parking spaces, two facing north on the northernmost building and two facing east in between the two buildings. Both have very direct access, accessible access to the trail and the improvements. And as part of that use, it was not just for ADA parking stalls. We've been able to on multiple occasions come to agreement to use all the parking in cooperation with the property owners and Mariners Church. And we're currently pursuing a longer-term agreement to kind of memorialize that on a long-term basis.
That's great. Thank you, Matthew.
Any other questions, Commissioner, Vice Chair?
Well, I have one other, but if it, if it goes beyond the scope of clarifying questions, I'll be happy to, to save it. But I'm, I'm wondering if Scott or you or any of the team can tell us if there will be a change in elevation of the base of the, of the bowl in Carter Park. Excuse me, a frog in my throat. Yeah, with respect to the the removal of the 500 cubic yards of, of soil from that site, I, it makes me wonder if, how much the elevation of the base of that park will be depressed.
No, to my knowledge, the, the, the current elevation of the, of the park would not decrease. Most of the excavation would take place within the footprints of both the stage and the new building.
Yes.
Through the chair, yeah, through the chair, our project architect with ELS, Mark Schatz. Bridget, can you bring him in on over? Mark can answer the question, I think, with a little bit more detail. From his design work that he's done.
There you go, Mark.
Hi, am I here?
You are, Mark. Welcome.
Do you guys see my backdrop? Because I, but it's the, it's a new rendering we did of the amphitheater. Anyway, I just will back up what Scott says. I raised my hand before he answered, which is that we're not lowering the elevation of the lawn area at all. But there is some regrading involved in terms of the accessible path and then the foundations of the buildings. And that's where the grading comes from.
Steve, if you'll let me pile on to that question with respect to the grading, I had a related question, which was whether the shape of the amphitheater seating is going to be modified from what it is now as, as part of that grading activity. Can you tell me, please, Mark?
Sure. Yes, it is. But we are following, you know, we're working with the existing contours. But we are adapting them so that we can have, you know, accessible stairways going up so that each of the platforms can be, you know, the right size so that people can either set up chairs on them or sit on the edge of them. So yes, we are regrading that to become a stepped amphitheater.
And is the, so I assume that we have some kind of stabilization measures in the design, because of course, whenever we change grading, you know, we're moving away from what nature produced there.
Yeah, there are concrete edges to each of those platforms. So yes, that will all be held in place.
Thank you for letting me jump in, Steve. I would give it back to you.
Of course. No, that I'm, I'm good for now. Thank you.
In, colleagues, any other questions? I had one other one, and it was related to, I wouldn't say it was related to noise. It's more related to function. So as I understand it, looking at those windows on the side, this is looking more like a Greek amphitheater than I thought when I heard it in July, which appeals to me. It's a nice classic design. It's hardly more classic than a Greek amphitheater. And I wondered if the location of the seating was set up to achieve, you know, the elliptical shape that means that the audience can hear very clearly with less amplification, therefore reducing the potential need for higher sound pressure levels that might, that might otherwise be required. I think Mark disappeared.
I'm moving him over to panelists. I'm sorry. And then I also have Jeffrey Ziba, and I don't know if he'd like, he's been wanting to speak as well. So I'm going to bring them both over. She'll just give me one moment.
All good.
Okay. You guys are both over here.
We can see.
All right. So, yeah, this is Jeff Ziba from ELS. I've been working on the project along with Mark. I raised my hand just to talk about for a moment the, the excavation and off-hall of, of soil from the project. The majority of that is coming from the excavation for the toilet facility and concession facility because that's dug into the hillside. We're using the existing topography to create the amphitheater, but as Mark said, yeah, definitely, it's going to be changed somewhat. But the majority of the, of the removal of soil from the site comes from that hillside, making the pathway accessible, digging out the concession toilet building and adjusting for the amphitheater. There's no change to the topography in the lower bowl. And the only thing that would be excavated down there was simply, as Mark mentioned, for the footings for the building. The building doesn't change the elevation either. In regards to the Greek amphitheater, I, I, I back that comment 100%. It's kind of serendipitous that it came out that way, but we, we like, we like that approach as well. And, and I hadn't heard it, I hadn't heard those two windows describing that term before. So I like that. I'm going to use that in the future, if you guys don't mind.
Drop me to respond on the amplification question.
Well, I, so I'll just, I'll just answer, and then you can, you can pick it up, Mark, if you want to. But so the seating, you know, as it's laid out now for a performance, let's say for the Shakespeare performance in, in the fall, the seating is much more intimate than it was before. You'll be closer. You won't be spread out across a flat lawn. So there should be better projection of people's voices and sound. We do have some accommodations for amplification. But really, that, that amphitheater is designed for sightlines and the area to allow for people to enjoy themselves up front. But it's, it's a pretty intimate setting. So, Mark, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that.
Yeah, what I want to add is just that when we met with the folks from the Shakespeare festivals, they said that what they currently do is that the speaking is not amplified, but the music for their little dance sequences is. The main time that there's sound amplification is when there are musical concerts there. So the Summers End Festival is the loudest event you hold. And, you know, there has been a lot of interest in expanding musical programming. But our sound engineers also did a study of music on the plaza downtown. And they tested the levels. And in fact, the noise from Highway 92 is louder at the apartments than the noise from the vents.
Yeah, thank you. I could just visualize the Greek chorus coming from behind those windows. But anyway, those were my only other clarifying questions. If no one else has any.
I, I had one.
Yes.
I just, it actually ties back to the question, you know, I, I thank you for the explanation of the kind of elevation that, that, you know, that's remaining the same. It's just the footings. That's what the excavation removal it's for. I just, one of the things I wanted to understand a little bit, because it is an area that has, you know, floods easily, tends to be kind of very soggy in winter and, you know, after there's been a few rainstorms. And I know that in the, our staff report talked about that the park is kind of the improvements of a design to accommodate periodic flooding without inhibiting water flow. And I wanted to, and I apologize, I've had a lot of, we had, I had, my house didn't have power for a while. So I haven't seen the actual recent memo. And so this may have been addressed in the most recent memo, and I apologize for that. But if maybe you could just describe a little bit more about kind of what are those design improvements that kind of allow, like if there is flooding, that it is not such a disaster for this, this park. And that would be helpful if you'd be willing to clarify that.
Great question.
Jeff, do you want to take it or do you want me to?
Sure, I can take it. So the approach with that is to try and use materials that are, you know, pretty much bulletproof. The building itself is made out of concrete block, the buildings, concrete The building itself is made out of concrete block, the buildings, concrete block, so they're able to withstand flooding. There's not a lot of interior finishes. They're pretty bare bones structure, so there really shouldn't be much damage if it does flood. Another thing that's working in our favor is that the stage wants to be slightly elevated. So there's a 30 inch difference from stage to grade down there. I don't think it's typical for the park to flood that high. I'm sure it's possible. But really, actors want to perform not on concrete. So we have designed a wood stage to be on top of a concrete base. That could easily be replaced, and we've designed it more like a deck than a stage, a typical stage floor, you know, it's not a highly sophisticated. Well, not that a stage floor is highly sophisticated, but typically there's stringers or and then plywood on top of that. But this is constructed more along the lines of the deck. If you've been to Stern Grove, it's kind of a similar approach to what they've done for their stage.
I moved so you could see the elevated stage in the drawing.
Why don't you just get out of the picture, Mark, so they can see the whole thing? I was kidding. Come on back.
Commissioner, may I jump in on your question, or were you getting more? So the only other thing that strikes me as being really maybe most subject to flooding would be the the solidarity trail, but it's decomposed granite. So it's all but anti fragile. You know, unless the water were really fast moving and could actually move the decomposed granite, it doesn't seem like it could do much. I noticed that there are existing, there's existing silk fences. Some of them are actually that plastic mesh that probably shouldn't be there at all right now. And I'm assuming that those will they're there for a temporary reason, and they will disappear very soon. Is that right?
Yeah. I think that's that's mostly designed to keep folks at the Fall Festival from wandering into the riparian zone. So.
Yeah, so we should have a, at some point, we should have a conversation about that. But that's not a, that's not a clarifying question. All right. Any other clarifying questions? Bridget, do you have a stack of people who would like to talk about this project for us? You're muted.
Yes, I have Mick Frer that would like to speak.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and invite Mike to give us his thoughts. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. I spoke at that 2018 meeting, and I would like to say that I appreciate much of the improvements that were made here relative to the buffer zone. That was a seemed like a huge issue at that time. It's hard to read the drawings precisely, but it looks like you nick it a little bit here and there. But I guess that would be a coastal commission issue. I I have to say that I was present at that that music concert, if you want to call it that, in my age bracket, we tend not to. It was so darn loud that former Commissioner Ken King was there with me, and he said, well, that solves the endangered species problem. They're all still running. It was brutally loud, and they did set up in the buffer zone tents and equipment, which would raise the question of will they be required to use the stage when they go there? As to the trail, it seems more like a pathway than a trail, because it doesn't really connect anything. But, you know, we just sent an LCP update where this commission talked about putting the trails at the furthest edge of the buffer zones. And so I was curious if the commission was interested in exercising its prerogatives to have that trail at the edge of the riparian zone. I do appreciate that you were going to have some markers around the trail to keep people on the trail. The just one thing, solidarity. To a person of my generation, the word solidarity means a lot of different things over time. And so I am perplexed as to why that name is chosen in 2018 and whatever was the hot button issue in 2018. I'm pretty sure it wasn't the Polish ship workers opposing the communist government. But perhaps the city council would want to think about a different form of naming. Because I don't think the general public is going to connect with that name. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Bridget, is there a next speaker?
I see no speakers.
Okay, have we got any written comments that we should be sharing with the commission?
So do you, oh, I do have one more now.
All right.
Or not? Let me check my email. Yes, I do have one speaker. I think it's Pat Black that would like to speak. She's a city's Park and Rec Chair. So one one moment.
Welcome, Pat, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I just would like to reiterate that the Parks and Rec Commission has fully fully vetted this project. We did outreach and had opportunities for the public to respond at our commission meetings, and it was very, very positive. The Carter Park project is is in line with the Parks Master Plan and the commission's values. And it's, it was absolutely, I'm new. This is my, I just celebrated my third year here in Half Moon Bay, and I experienced the the 2019. We had the Summer End Concert, and I'll tell you, it was so impressive because it just didn't bring together residents and people wanting to listen to music, very diversified. But it also had nonprofits there as well, and it was a definite experience for folks to get to know the different nonprofits in our area as well as to support friends of the Parks and Rec. And it was just a wonderful family experience. It was absolutely, it was so touching. I I I just felt so proud to be to live here and especially to be part of the Parks and Rec Commission. A lot of good work is going on. The work that's gone into developing the plan for the improvements is just amazing. And to to have the presentations that were made by John Doughty, as well as Mark, coming to our meetings and keeping us abreast of exactly what was going on. And I thank you very much for the time allotted, and I look forward to moving forward with the plan. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you for speaking. Bridget, are there any written comments or other speakers who would like to to address us?
I see none.
For both? No written comments either?
I have no emails that have come in.
All right, anything? Jill, anything coming from your side or Karen? All right. In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Who has questions or comments? I I can't tell whether Sarah's raising her hand or not.
Commissioner Hernandez is raising his hand.
Commissioner Hernandez, do you have the floor?
I want to commend Mark Schatz and Jeffrey Ziba and ELS and city staff for this project. I think we have seen what a good public process can produce, and this is it. So, thank you. I'm pleased with the accommodations that have been made to the environmental setting. I find that the design is harmonious with the environment and is something that is going to take, frankly, what is oftentimes an eyesore location and turn it into a true public resource. To quote my fellow Commissioner Holt, good use drives out bad, and I think that this is going to drive a lot of good use for our community. So I am very supportive of this project and very pleased with the diligence that has gone into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else?
Rick stole my line, but I'll just say ditto. Thanks. I appreciate appreciate this effort. I think Carter Park is, you know, a potential jewel for the community. I'd like to see it activated and appreciate the thoughtfulness that's gone into it and sort of, you know, trying to protect the resources that are in that area while still, you know, recognizing this is a you know, a central part of our community and a place that that can accommodate some public use. So appreciate it moving forward and appreciate the Park and Recreation Master Plan, including the site. And I'm glad to see that that plan being implemented.
Very good, Commissioner Holt. Christian Pogar, Commissioner Riddick, Vice Chair Riddick, you have the floor.
Thanks. Yeah, it's a, it's impressive when Karen was showing the recap of the the history of the public outreach and the input and involvement in this project. It's it's really, I think, probably a blueprint for how to do it the right way. I really like the colors and materials. I really like the the way the, as as Commissioner Hernandez said, how this promises to be harmonious with the environment there. I guess the one concern I have is continues to be with the stormwater management, which we talked about a fair amount at the July 2019 meeting. And I know that I've been in Carter Park on numerous occasions, as I'm sure you all have. And and it isn't unusual for it to be pretty wet down there. And I'm pleasantly surprised to hear from the architects that the elevation of the base of it is is not to be depressed further than that, which I would fear would aggravate the flooding potential. I wonder, I worry a little bit about the the synthetic turfs that are to be used on the amphitheater seating and the and the so called lawn seating in front of the stage. And I guess there's a rubberized surface under the playground structures. Seems like a pretty big chunk of impermeable surface that we're adding there. So I don't know if it's appropriate through the chair to ask the architects again to to give us an understanding of why that isn't going to be an egregious acceleration of flood worries.
Perfectly normal. We'll open the reopen the public hearing and invite the applicant or the Public Works Director. I see a halfway, either that or he's waving bye bye. I think that
If I, Chair, if I, I'll, if I could take a whack, I guess, at the first piece of that, and you don't need to open the public hearing because they're part of the team. So just just as a point of of order on that one. We 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 clearly have have evaluated this closely, and and we went back and forth on the issues. And frankly, I'm speaking because Jeff, if he was being completely honest with you, they would have asked, and they asked for this to be particularly the dancing area to be grassy and turf area, and we're the ones who pushed back on that. So I own this one and my staff. And in part, our concerns really come around from a maintenance perspective. We've we saw what in San Francisco, we've seen a lot of, I I've seen a lot of the amphitheaters and the round and whatever variations with them, and maintenance is a significant challenge and issue with that. And so we were, you know, trying to find a way that this would look for the longest, the best possible way, and not put a huge burden on Public Works Maintenance Staff to try to maintain it. The other piece of this is, is that because of that wetness and everything, we were concerned that this would just be potentially too much of the time down in the dance area, a mucky wet mess. And a continual issue of reseating or re-sodding after event, after event, after event. So this was a trade off. I have to say, it was a trade off. A challenging one at that. But everything in terms of the stormwater, pre and post, will be evaluated. We will basically treat, protect. This is a project that exceed that is that meets the requirements as a as a as a as a larger project under the stormwater permit. So all of that is extremely closely monitored, both during construction and in the long run for ongoing maintenance of that. So that was really our ultimate recommendation and ask that the design incorporate that and impart because of that. And and when you look at it in the context, I think of the overall project site, it's not really a significant amount of impervious area. And there's some permeability to to all of that in some regards as well. But but let's call it that. It's still not a significant amount. You've got runoff coming off of a slope area anyway. You're not, it's not settling on there. So you're dealing with, again, now we're stepping, and now it's a slope that water is just shedding off of and going directly. It might as well be concrete. Because there's nothing really, you know, permeating on a on a pretty on a two to one slope much. So I'll let the consultants answer anything that I didn't or correct me if I where I made a mistake on it. But but I just want to be clear that, you know, those were really about as much about anything about maintenance and long term.
Through the chair, a quick clarifying question. So the, I understood that the turf was in the stadium kind of seating area, but then at the the area labeled lawn on sheet A201 in front of the stage is also turf. Is that correct? I misunderstood, I maybe misunderstood that previously.
I believe that is lawn.
But We went back and we went back and forth on that issue multiple times.
Yeah, and I'm I'm looking through the drawing package now, and I see the civil has indicated it as turf. So that kind of goes to show that we have gone back and forth. You know, the construction documents have stopped at about 75% when the pandemic hit. So we have a little bit of coordination to do before these are complete. And just just to mention, and I know that Matthew wants to say a couple of points here, too, but and and we also went to great lengths to compensate, try to compensate as much as possible for the fact that we were adding certain impervious areas to the site by using permeable paving materials. We did some research to find finishing materials that are not only accessible but permeable. So that's where the decomposed granite came in. We're using that at the picnic grounds. We're using that for the pathways. There's been a fair amount of landscape planting added to that hillside area beyond the amphitheater. So that'll help to absorb some of the runoff that's coming down. But yeah, our civil engineer has studied all this, and he was quite confident in his numbers that there's plenty of opportunity for the runoff to percolate into the soil before it gets to the creek.
And if I could just add, just to be completely transparent here, there was back and forth, but where we landed, the city's recommendation is that all of those grass surfaces are artificial turf. So that'll be that'll be corrected in the finalized documents when the construction documents are completed. And I'll all own not making that clear in in the documents you received today. We apologize for that.
You're on mute, Jimmy.
Commissioner Pogar, you still have the floor? Did you want to follow up?
Not right now. I I had misunderstood that, the, you know, that. So let me think. Why don't you go ahead if somebody else has comments or questions?
It looks like Mark wants to add an additional thought about the, the turf matter.
It wasn't about the turf, but the question also asked about the resilient paving under the play structure. And that was put in to provide a fully handicap accessible play area. You need to have something that a wheelchair can go over, but then also cushion kids when they fall.
Insightful, thank you. I would like to follow up a question. We talked a little bit about the irrigation for the plants that we, you know, would be having that we, we were going to be using drought tolerant. But of course, there's irrigation for them to be established. As we've been discussing, this is also an area that's subject to substantial flooding. So I'm trying to understand the plant palette choices that are drought tolerant, that needed irrigation and that are, you know, presumably beyond establishment and are also going to be tolerant of flooding. Can you help me understand the, the choices? I'm not, I'm not the expert to critique them, but I just want to understand that's, that's a pretty broad variety of conditions.
I know I would need to defer to our landscape architect to clarify that because they're the ones that picked the plants. And they know the conditions. It's the same landscape architect who's working on the bridge and they've done other work in Half Moon Bay. But we entrusted plant selection to them.
Yeah, well, I, you know, we have a lot of wizards on staff. Jill knows a great deal about these plants, so she may also be very capable of responding to the question.
So we could review that again.
Any thoughts on that, Jill, or is the plant landscape consultant available? We were talking about the, that's fine, I understand. We're all, we're all moving a million miles an hour here.
We are. Thank you, Chair Benjamin. I am trying to type everything you say, so I'm a little bit behind. And a couple of clarifications on the plants and irrigation. Staff is happy to keep working with, with the project landscape architect. That said, I, I think that what we're looking at from the flooding perspective and, and being able to withstand that, there's not a lot of planting down at that level. There's, there's more planting higher up. And I, I looked at Scott on, on that as well. It is a tricky area. The light changes a lot. Solar access is really a challenge. One of the hardest environments to have, have plants thrive in is the combination of arid and shade. Dry shade is, is, there's just not a huge palette of things that do well in that. So getting plants established with drip irrigation is something you've approved in other projects. And envisioning that, once they get a toehold and really start enjoying the happy day climate, may be able to relinquish the drip over time because this is public space and will be, you know, used a lot. And it's more likely that we would just continue to really carefully maintain the drip irrigation. And also, um, it happens that the public work staff is going to observe what is doing well and will replace if it's not already successful. And, and you'll see shifts over, over a decade in terms of a palette for, for public space. So I, I think keeping some options open with responsible water use and limited grading and soil disruption, the kinds of plants that are going to really hang on to where they're planted, would be our focus.
And the mitigation, I'm trying to remember, actually not the mitigation, but the, the conditions on the coastal development permit require the vegetation to be established and maintained, yes? All right.
To Scott, but I believe that's a standard.
Is that the case, Scott?
Yes, that's a standard condition of approval.
Okay, good. Then I wanted to turn to the, the sediment stability question. I appreciate that with the impermeable surfaces, one benefit of that is during a gully washer, colorful term for a heavy storm, in some ways that the impermeable services can shield some of the, the terraced areas from the kind of dissolution into the rainwater, dissolution into rainwater of the soils in the area. But I wonder about the mitigation and monitoring conditions or the, the, the ways that we react to stabilizing. Can you just remind me what the conditions are that will help us if we start to see instability on the surfaces? Do we have the requirements to make it right? This is bank instability I'm talking about.
So there is a, a maintenance requirement with, with this, this permit that maintaining and improving the, the park over time is, is, is part of the project.
So there's no issue with, so if we start to see, you know, parts of the seats sliding off or there's a erosion deforming around the edge of the concession area bathrooms, these are out of compliance kind of conditions as opposed to, yeah, that's a problem. Maybe we ought to get a project together someday to do something.
Yes, that's correct. And we're, through this process, we, we try very hard to make it very obvious that maintenance is part of the project. And that's, that's part of what's, what the planning commission is reviewing this evening. So.
Okay, okay, thank you. Sarah, did you collect your thoughts and want to go some more? Are you still pondering? Oh, Commissioner Hernandez gets a bite.
I'd like to double click on the, on the question of the turf. We've done a few studies of turf on the planning commission while I've been here. My first question is, are you using any kind of infill material on the turf? Or you're just using a, you know, polyethylene type material for the turf? Is that your plan?
I'm not sure what the landscape architect has spec, but actually I also work on some sports fields. So I would not expect there would be infill on this because that's typically a playing surface type element. You know, the underlays and things for this situation would be much simpler than a sports field installation.
The concern that has been raised in the past when using materials like coconut husk or cork is that those materials can get mold in Half Moon Bay, given our climate. And so I'd be very cautious about using any materials that are prone to mold or mildew or things like that. I, I'm, as the, the turf on the, the seating seems like a reasonable way to go. You have a good place to sit. It's, it's easy to clean. Lots of reasons why that makes sense. I have to admit, being made aware that the lawn area is turf, I have some concerns about the drainage. I have some concerns around things like mold. And so I don't think we need to litigate this here. But I do think that between city staff and the landscape architect, to really want to make sure that we double click on the surface we're putting there to make sure that we don't have health issues or actual higher maintenance costs because we put in the wrong material on those locations. It's pretty damp there, as I think all of you have recognized. And so I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing there. And if, if it's a decision of, hey, we, we should use natural lawn versus artificial turf, I think that's a decision best left to city staff and the landscape architect. But just want to make sure we're not creating a hazard in that space.
Just to follow on your, your comment, Rick, one possibility would be to be sure that we have conditions that assure the health of the space that's being chosen so that the project has a built-in check stop that if, you know, we start to see mold or mildew, then it mandates a change. So that instead of making the call, we can delegate and hold the project design accountable to that goal. What do you think?
No, I think the maintenance, I mean, Matt might want to jump in on this or John Doughty might want to jump in on this. But the, I would assume that the maintenance provision would include things like that. I don't think we need to go much further. I just, I just want to make sure on the forefront, we're thinking this through. If we screw up and we need to fix it down the road, I'm sure, well, I suspect, but it would be good to get confirmation from city staff that with the current proposal, they'd be able to correct any issues.
And that mold and build would be considered an issue, yes?
From, from us, through the chair, just from a, from, we understand that we're going against sort of sometimes a, a heavy headwind from, from the way we approach things in the past from a maintenance perspective. So a lot of, you know, a lot of this is, we, we understand is, is, is sort of out of concern from prior lack of maintenance in some regards at times or any of that deal. Let me just say this, those are basic issues that we're concerned about. Life safety, health, welfare, all of those things come into it. So back to the issues of if we have major issues of erosion occurring, that's a problem, both from a facilities maintenance perspective as well as a liability and concern. And the same thing comes with the, whether it's the turf or, or the synthetic turf with that. And I, I think there's still some time to re, you know, to evaluate that and determine. And I will say this, it's not, you know, it's not a significantly large enough area that we can't fix, we can't change if we really don't like the end result of, on either way of those things. In the end, it's really a small, a small cost to, to basically go and make a change down the road from a maintenance perspective. In the big picture of a large project, it's a pretty, in pretty small area to, to fix and recognize that we made a mistake perhaps in the design down the road.
So even if the high school football field saga of a decade ago is a cautionary tale that repeats itself, the cost of a fix is orders of magnitude different?
Yeah. And again, we're, we, we're not looking at a rubberized infill surface or the coconut or anything here. This is not a sport field where you require that bounce and, and, and give in this deal. We're talking about basically the, you know, the plastic, you know, carpet there of, of, of artificial grasses, not with all the infill material and everything anyway. So it's a very different than, than a sport field and the concerns were obviously with the rubberized surfaces, other things beyond.
Our hip hop dancers might be disappointed, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Matthew, did you?
Sorry, I'll, I'll add a quick comment to this. And I think the other thing as we've talked through this is we've already firsthand seen how difficult it is to maintain a grass lawn in this area and how often you can't use that park because of the moisture. And so I think our hope is that by doing this, we, we increase the utility of the park and it can be used more often, you know, throughout the year. And, and of course, you know, as John's pointed out, we will keep a close eye. And I think you've raised some significant, important concerns that we need to stay on top of and course correct at some point if needed.
Commissioner Pogar.
So I, you know, I don't want to pile on this issue, but I, there's a couple of things that, so I, I'm not thrilled with having, you know, grass lawn there because I think it is hard to, to keep it, make it useful because it can be sketso wet. But I also don't think it's a, you know, I, I'm not going to oppose the project for this or anything. I'm just saying that I don't think it's a great idea to put a substance that in an area that you know is going to flood pretty regularly. And so it's draining, you know, you're going to have surface flow over it. It's likely that it will also hold moisture quite a bit, you know, and, and you'll, you'll get like, you know, seasonal ponds, which you're not, sorry. I didn't mean to suggest you're going to get wetlands on your, on your Astro turf. But I'm just saying that like, it, it's not, if you already know that it's not the right thing to put there, then it's probably not a great idea to go, even if it's a low cost to deal with it. You know, if you, you know, kind of you, what you kind of suspected might be a problem ends up being a problem. I'm just saying I don't, I'm not thrilled with this aspect of it. I don't love the lawn anyways. And I do think that you have to, you have to think about the, the challenge of the fact that if you then decide that you want to go back and put in lawn, you got to have irrigation, which I think you could still figure out because you have the water access there, I think. I was trying to look at the plans and kind of figure that out. But, um, but it's just, it may be worthwhile seeing if there's a, a third solution that you could propose. Even if it's like decomposed granite or something, I mean, that is actually not that bad for an option. You know, I don't know. I, I am not a landscape architect. I'm just saying, I'm speaking from the perspective of thinking about putting a, a type of surface in there that is really not designed for repeated, you know, inundation essentially. And it's not, it is, in that area, it's kind of inundation almost. So, and standing water. And I am worried about like, I'm actually worried about, you know, kind of what are you going to have leaching out of there? Because again, I let water sitting on it and then leaching into the creek. There was actually just a recent article that was published about some of the leachates. In that case, it was tires. I don't know that these, the, you know, these things have the same as tires. I'm not at all. I'm just saying that like, you don't know. And I just, it's not a great solution. It's the one part that it's kind of giving me pause about this. I'm, again, I want to back up because I never got to say ditto about what Rick said and ditto about what Brian said about the project. I'm really excited about it. So it's just this, this piece is a little bit puzzling for me or challenging. And I feel like there could be a better option. So that was the piece I wanted to pile on. Sorry about this topic.
So Jimmy, you're on mute, so I'll just jump in and start speaking since you're trying to figure out how to work your mute button. The, I, I think there, I, I would get creative on the materials on the lawn. And I, I think Sarah hit the point that I wasn't able to quite articulate, which is standing water on plastic is just a really crummy idea and it creates all kinds of potential hazards. So I, I think we should just consider an alternative. And I don't think we need to define that here, but city staff, landscape architect, just double click on this, really think this through so that we make a better decision. I, I would agree with Sarah. I was actually thinking the same thing. Decomposed granite might be a better product here, but we'll, we'll let you guys work through those details.
Director Doughty.
They, you know, I, I, we certainly can look at that and evaluate it and deal with it. I, I will just say this, from a lot of the public comments and public outreach and even at the Parks and Rec Commission, there was an absolute desire to be able to take your shoes off and have, and, and dance and, and, and dance shoeless. So I, you know, it sounds, it sounds kind of silly, quaint, whatever you want to deal with. But that was a clearly an articulated position by a number of people. And so we were trying to find a solution to do that and, and, and have that as a grassy area of some form that you could take, kick your shoes off and dance around and deal with that. If it's simply about putting chairs down, then certainly something more solid than that can deal with it. I'll stop and say thank you for giving us and trusting in us the, the ability to, to, to try to evaluate what, what makes sense, what's safe, what's environmentally sensitive, what's the appropriate thing? And trust that we will do that. But I just didn't want it to be left out that that was articulated to us and what we were trying to achieve out of this. Because there certainly were easier answers that you, that you pointed to in terms of a more solid base there of not grass or, or, or artificial surface.
Everybody wants to dance barefoot in the park, but nobody wants to dance barefoot in weird squishy stuff. So I'll let you guys sort it out.
Raised bed gardening, maybe there's a raised bed dance floor. I don't know. You guys can work it out like you said. I think that's fine. If I can shift the focus, unless there are other, others that want to talk about sod versus turf versus other things, I'd like to talk about lighting for a moment. I appreciated the additional response to comments. I wrote a, I wrote a note to staff earlier today about the, the concerns of understanding what the standard is that we're using for managing the impact of the lights on the tower that are aimed at the stage. Um, managing the impact of the lights on the tower that are aimed at the stage and the potential for it to wash. Behind the stage into the area behind it, maybe through the, um, the holes. That the Greek chorus will traipse through, um, during, during, um, those performances. And if I understand it correctly, the goal is that there is. Uh, a really minimal amount of light, but I, I had trouble understanding what that. Uh, what that amount of light is because I'm not a lighting expert, but it sounds like Jeffrey. Has some experience with this. So Jeff, can you help me understand? What it is that in the, in the performance objective as modified by the staff report? What it is that we're saying about the light from the towers on the stage. Leaking into the riparian buffer zone and riparian zone.
Uh, well, we have a theater pro- uh, theater consultant for the project as well. So, um, you know, we could get more information from them, but. Really the lighting that is designated for performance. Uh, is, should not be considered like general lighting for the park itself by any means. So, uh, you know, we've. We've approached, uh, lighting the park with a fairly subtle touch. Um, we're achieving circulation around the amphitheaters by low level step lights. You get the lights close to where people are walking. You don't have to have as high a, you know, you don't have to have a, a large amount of light to throw it and cover, make things safe. In fact, on the light poles, uh, generally speaking, uh, the production lights probably won't even live up there. Um, they would probably be taken down just for fear that, that they'd be an attractive target for somebody to walk away with if they were up all the time. Um, during a performance, yeah, you're, you're going to have, uh, larger light levels to light the actors. But those lights are very focused. There's not, you know, if, if you're not pointing it. Towards the riparian area, it's, uh, the only thing that will get beyond is anything that bounces off and reflects off the stage. Uh, the two doorways or the two windows that you're talking about. Those are actually circulation paths that get you to, uh, the, the inner building and stairs and ramps that get you down to. The level of the park. Uh, so, um, they're not. That location is not particularly close to the riparian zone.
Is it shielded?
Uh, well, those are not shielded in terms of light. We hadn't, you know, we hadn't thought that that was a need.
I'm not sure it is. I'm just.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I guess our feeling was that this, the light would be. Um, specialty use enough and also focused enough that. Yeah, you know, people, you have to make certain exceptions in a, in like, uh. Uh, an energy, uh, uh, viewpoint and things like that when you have an operating theater, but, but, um. The goal is not to use those lights unless there's a performance. I think a lot of the performances that, uh, Shakespeare, uh, does, uh, are done during the day. I don't, they might bring some lighting in. I'm not sure, but. So, uh, if there's not a big change in the way they run their shows. Uh, there may not be a great need for additional lighting, but this just allows a little more flexibility with the park. Um, but it's certainly, you know, a concern that, that we would address, so.
Yeah. And I may be the only commissioner who was asking about lighting. I don't know that it's a broader concern. I did hear the public ask about, uh, noise levels and I appreciated the. Um, the, both the response and the, the six or seven pages we got on the sound report and the staff report. Um, I was struggling to understand what the C and E L level was. Um, now versus what it will be when the park is used more. You know, if we achieve our goals for the intensity of use, that it becomes used more heavily. And it's not that I think that the, uh, frequency of use is guaranteed to have an impact. I'm. I'm trying to understand what the conditions are that would help us avoid impacts. And, um. Uh, you know, I, I'm, I realized that, I mean, music is sound, right? Noise is. What, one person's music is someone else's noise. So I'm not here to be the arbiter of that taste, but, you know, uh. Sound pressure levels do have a meaning. And I was just looking, you know, I saw in the report, there was a summary of. Different times where different sources of noise or of, of sound occurred. But I was, I was struggling to find what the before and after C and E level projections are. Or what our standards are going to be to avoid impacts. It sounds like noise element standards we think are all being met. Um, and that's, that sounds like the key, but since noise has come up also. Um, the noise ordinance issues relating to, uh, you know, the sensitive receptors. I just want to be sure we hit on that again, so that we have clarity of where we are with respect to sound.
Are the sound, uh, noise consultants we brought in Charles Salter and Associates. Are the gold standard or even the platinum standard for the Bay Area and they've worked all over the country as well. Um, they didn't feel it was an issue except at the points of performance. You know, it's, there's ambient noise levels already to the, um, nearby housing. And nothing on the daily use. They felt caused any problems beyond that.
I see.
So their testing was, you know, more with the exceptional times. When there were things there that would have amplified sound. Otherwise, playgrounds and picnics, you know, kind of thing.
I understand. Thank you. Uh, question to Karen, in the outreach to. The community you'd mentioned, I think the likely suspects were, was the term you used in your report. Um, did you get the sense that there were some neighbors who really had reservations about any noise or whether it was just really loud noises at concert that's. Perhaps could be, you know, if they're subject to a permitting process like most amplified. Uh, performances are maybe the potential adverse impacts could be addressed then.
Yeah, frankly, the concerns were very general. Um, we didn't get to that level of specificity. Um. I think it's fair to assume it could be addressed in a permit process, but I really would defer to Jill.
Let's do that. What do you say, Jill?
Yeah, well, as Scott and I have a, a few follow-up, um, things to add to the noise discussion and, uh. We, we want to make sure that we are differentiating between the sensitive receptors that are, are. Um, developed properties and in particular, those would be the residential developments on, near the project site, near the, near the park. And, um, then we have our natural, um, environment and sensitive receptors that are part of the riparian environment. So. Our, um. Sequo consultant is here, uh, David Powers, and they can speak to the, um. Baseline, uh, sound levels and answer those technical questions that Chair Benjamin was answering. Um, but what Scott and I would respond with in terms of these two different, um, sensitive receptor populations is. We, we definitively have, um, the sound study indicating that we would conform with the noise. Element of our general plan as well as the noise ordinance with respect to the types of. Um, performances that were studied by this consultant that, that our project architect referenced. Um, for the special status species and, um, several of note that we called out in a, in the memo to you. Um, we had to dig in a little bit deeper on that because it's a, a very different, um, thing to be thinking about for. Uh, this corridor and its setting. And so we hope that you've had time to read your memo. We're sorry. Um, Commissioner Pogar, that your power was out and we know our memo came out late. Were you able to get your hands on that? At some point, I, it is.
Unless, unless the performance includes a pile driver, we're probably okay on the listed species side.
Yeah, yeah. It was a really favorable review and we appreciated that Chair Benjamin, um, pushed on that a bit just to really confirm that. We weren't just looking at development, but, but also considering that, uh, natural environment. So if there's more beyond what we've, um, put in that document to you this afternoon. Um, we can certainly bring, uh, Kelly Hardwick, um, from H T Harvey or. Um, one of the folks from David Powers, who was our sequo consultant. Uh, to, to respond to you. Uh, Steve, I think Steve Rottenborn is also here from H T Harvey. They're, they're really happy to, uh, fill, field your questions. They've done a lot of study of the Pillar Cedas Creek corridor. In this area, including, um, for the Main Street Bridge area as well as up at the, um. Eight eighty Stone Pine property, uh, east of, of this project site where the city's corporate is. So they, they've. Uh, really gotten all over this area.
Yeah, I, I, I want to be clear. I probably should have joined Sarah in saying I, I probably should have had my ditto comment out on the floor earlier. About appreciating everything that's happened. Um, and, and these questions about sound are really more while we have the experts in the room. Uh, you know, just existentially, there's a level of noise during a concert that is loud enough to be disturbing, right? You could turn the amp up to eleven or if that's not enough to twelve. And eventually you get a problem. And I'm trying to figure out what we should be, if we have guidance from our experts about how loud. Is too loud, so that we can use that as a condition on performances that take place that are amplified. Does that clarify the question?
Well, I forgot to answer the part of the question about special event permits. So one of the proposed conditions of. That, um, Scott has brought forward to you and his, his draft document is. That especially that permits will be required for any event that would include sound amplification and. Um, of course, live performances, performances on the stage. It's at that point where we will review the sound amplification levels. I don't think they've given us a, what's the cutoff, um, noise level. And they, they didn't because they based it on, um, realistic. Amplification that was happening at other events. And so this, um. It isn't that it's open-ended, it's that this is, this is the level of sound that is needed to have the kind of event that. Uh, folks are expecting for live performance. So, um. It's, it's based on that and you have also a monitoring condition to consider in the, um, your packet for. Um, annual monitoring as we move forward with park implementation. Where we can tweak, tweak things if we need to, if we, if we find that we are having impacts that we didn't anticipate. And that's, that's really. Typical of Sequo with mitigation monitoring reporting programs. We added it as an extra condition of approval. Uh, we thought the commission would appreciate having, having that hook.
I see. Okay. Thank you very much. I, I appreciate those answers. I just think it's important for them to get out in the, in the conversation. Um, Commissioner Pogar, you've been chewing on things for a little while. Did you want to come back in?
Sure. I have a couple of things. Um. Uh, they aren't related to the topics necessarily that we've been talking about, so, um. I, I'll, but I'll dive in and if folks want to go back to what we've been talking about. Um. So a couple of things, one are, uh, I will say, I, with respect to, uh, Mike Ferrara's comments about the. Um, use of the buffer zone and kind of like as a staging, you know, temporarily in a, you know, in, like the riparian zone, sorry. You know, that, that, I, I do think it's important to be clear, like, whether that's okay or not. And so that, that, you know, that's a very clear, like, you are, you know, and that's, that's something should be laid out in the. You know, use permit or whatever, but, you know, eh, eh, I just want to make sure because I do think there's this feeling that, oh, well, for events, you can kind of. Stage anywhere. And if that's not okay, because this is a riparian buffer, we should be explicit about that. Um. So I, I'll be honest, I'm not sure that that necessarily, uh, on a couple of events, you know, would have tremendous impacts, but I don't want it to become kind of something that's just. Seems like it's okay to just use that buffer, buffer zone, that riparian buffer zone. So, um. It's just, eh, I think it's very important to be clear about what's okay and what's not. Um, and not, not just for the permanent structures, but also for, you know, the, the kind of temporary or staging uses, um, during an event, for instance. So that was one comment. Another thing has to do with, um, I, you know, I, I. I agree kind of with him that, that it's a little bit funny to call that, that the trail is, you know, like the, as if it's like a long trail around the solitary trail. Um. I don't, you know, I'm, I'm not going to object to the calling it a solidarity trail, solidarity or a trail, but it is kind of short. Um. It's fine. I'm not saying, suggesting that I think it's kind of a nice feature. I do think that people will appreciate it, um, and. And eh, it will be a nice use. I think it gives you an opportunity to kind of be a little bit separated, um, from some of the activity, uh, the more active spaces on the, um. The park. Um, but the other thing about, uh, the, kind of another area like a trail. And this is kind of me whining because I don't think that there's an opportunity for us to make a change, but I'll just say that. The trail that runs along the, uh, let's see, I guess it's the north side. So it's up high. Along the parking, the south side of the parking for the, the, the commercial area, the Stone Pine. Um. That trail is relatively narrow. It's the one that has, like, as you get to the main street, they fixed, I love, I'm very pleased. To see how the kind of entrance that trail from Main Street is now much more inviting. I like that there's not a big obstructive sign. Um, I've actually walked, physically walked into that sign, um, because I was stupidly looking down. Um, and so. I, I have a beef with that existing structure there. And so I'm really pleased. I like the, the setup. I just wish that the trail that leads. Uh, along that south, that kind of north side of the park could be wider. It is a little bit narrow. I don't know if maybe there's a way to improve it. Right now, a lot of the, kind of the plants, which are nice, I like. They, um, they do encroach on it. And so I just, it's a thought. I think it would make it a little bit easier for access into the area overall. And a little more inviting if the trail itself or a little, the, the path, sorry, it's, it's not really a trail, it's a path. Uh, were more, were wider. So if that were feasible, I'd love it. If not, I, you know, I get it. Um, and then the other thing to consider, we talked a little bit about the, the plants. Um, you know, I know, uh. Chair Benjamin, you brought up the issue of the irrigation, drip irrigation and that, and I know, um. Uh, Jill, you mentioned that the, like, the, the, eh, drip irrigation is really for the plants that are further, that are higher. That are not necessarily going to be like inundated during heavy rains or like if there's. Thing or something. And I will kind of vo- voice my support for having that, that, you know. That era, that landscaping up high in the park, because I think it will help. Improve kind of the climate, like it'll help, you know, prevent some of the wind, like it can get kind of windy and cold and, and so I do think that having that. Vegetation on the slope, I guess, adjacent to the amphitheater, feeding theater and likes on the slopes is important. Um, it, it makes the space a little more inviting and comfortable, I think. Um. It also, yeah, so I just wanted to voice that. I, I do think that's important and I'm pleased to see it, uh, you know, I could see it in the plan. So. Um, those were my other thoughts. The only other thing that I, and this I don't think is really necessarily anything to do with the, the project, but I have. Been a little bit disturbed by the amount of Cape Ivy that is taking over. And that, but that's not in the project area and I don't see any issue, like nothing I see that would look, cause more. Cape Ivy, um, because I think that what's happened is there's kind of been a lot of, like a couple of trees that have fallen near the, um. The bridge, the main street bridge, you know, that have actually allowed the Cape Ivy to kind of overgrow. And maybe that's what I'm noticing, but I don't want to see that. Spread onto the, you know, the, the, to the, the riparian area adjacent to the, the park. And I don't think that'll happen, but I just, that, just for the record, I want to mention that that's a concern. I see in the, in the vicinity of this project. So those are, those are my thoughts.
Uh, thank you. I'll, I'll just, uh, briefly comment that. Uh, I think the code is very clear about what is and is not permitted in the riparian buffer zone. So it's really, I don't think it's even our discretion whether amps can set up there. Um, the path is okay. People walking on the path is okay. Maybe they can wheel an amp on the path, but I don't think they can put something temporarily or permanently there, other than that. Very, very limited. Um, the, I assume that at some point those, I mentioned the silt fence during the clarifying questions. There's sort of a. Bright green plastic fence on the part that's furthest away from Stone Pine and. A solid sort of dark gray green one closer up. I'm assuming that. Um. I, I don't think those are the kind that endangered species are supposed to be near. So it may be a bad thing that they're there to begin with. But, um, to the extent that they're. Uh, going to be replaced as part of the plan with something that is more appropriate, I support that. And in my opinion, it can't happen soon enough. I'm seeing a pause of comments. Commissioner Riddick.
Thank you. I I also wanted to support what Mike Ferrera shared about the the possible mistreatment of the of the buffer at past events there. I think this this project will give us an opportunity to to protect the buffer zone better with the the split rail fence that will go in. And I I also think it might be a great idea if the if the permits for events in Carter Park going forward, make it explicit that there's not to be any any use, any staging or any other use of the of the buffer zone, other than people walking on the trail.
Yeah, I think we could always add poison oak to the plant pallet next to the fence. We really wanted to make the point. I'm just kidding.
Great idea.
Yeah, but I I do I do share your concern. I mean, that that area is abused by people, you know, visitors and people who don't have another place to live. And either way, it it suffers. And to the to the extent that we can create a space that's more attractive and usable with people who are more conscious of the rules. And if the interpretive trail can provide insight so that people gain an appreciation for the beauty of that riparian place and its fragility, you know, maybe we can make a move on the next generation. There are signs in the in the open space area, you know, sheriff signs on four by four posts saying this is a sensitive habitat, get out of here essentially. It would be nice if they could be moved a little further out. I don't know, maybe they have to be there. But, you know, signage next to the trail, nice signage out in the in the riparian buffer zone, less nice if we can avoid it. And I want to second Commissioner Polgar's comments. I I went riding by on my trail bike. And when I was at the top of the trail heading back out to Main Street, I did notice the handlebars had to navigate past the the foliage in the Stone Pine Center parking lot. So a little width there might be welcome for many different types of users. Additional thoughts, colleagues? All right, I think we should, if there are no further comments. Staff, did you have anything else you wanted to say? I would like to get a motion.
Just to remind you that you're doing adoption and it's a two part.
So if someone wanted that, they could just say the resolution's next in order and that would work.
Well, the question, do we have to be explicit about the late changes that were made to the was a change made not not to the resolution, but
the conditions, the ones in the memo?
Yes.
You could add that to a motion if you were to if you wish.
And there was one, just to be clear, there was one amended mitigation measure in the memo, and that's the scope of it. But of course, if you have more things to add, this is the time.
Well, the other thing I wondered about it, we talked about the the surface for the so-called dance area for quite a while, but I'm not sure we we came to a consensus about that.
My set, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Were we were we going to ask staff to pursue that perhaps in conjunction with the with the project architects on the on the best and healthiest solution for that surface?
What's the wish of the commission? I will facilitate whatever you would like.
I'm not sure if we need to add a condition to the existing project. I think that just we we've made our intent clear to city staff. I don't think we need to add anything to this unless city staff feels strongly otherwise.
Just before we get a response from them, I will say that the plans call for artificial turf. So as it stands, it rather it rather constrains you.
I'll just say that I think the concerns were noted. I think they're reasonable and astute, and we will work closely with the architects to evaluate all the options for that area to to Commissioner Hernandez's point, select a surface that will provide the most utility, be the safest, you know, all the all the considerations that have been talked about tonight. Jill's got further.
Well, and I I'm just chiming in because I want to make sure the commission understands. Because you've given this direction about exploring a range of surfaces, there is a condition of approval that gives staff some purview for minor amendments. And I would consider using that if we were able to stick within what we think those guidances are that we heard tonight. And if we're struggling and we come up with something else that we don't think is aligned with what we heard tonight, we wouldn't call that a minor amendment. We'd bring it back to you. So you're you have that type of flexibility. It requires practice discretion and your feedback. So just sharing that's how I for that one.
I appreciate that. And the requirement for a special permit for amplification is also built in?
That's already in your conditions of approval.
Right. Commissioner Riddick, you still have the floor?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was trying to wrap my mind around the language necessary to encompass that. What were what were your words, Jill? We had a we had amended?
You have a mitigation measure that was amended and presented to you in a memo. So you could say per the amended mitigation measure about lighting standards.
Okay.
That'd be very clear.
Well, in that in that case, and can one do this, these two steps in one motion or do they require two separate motions?
I don't think someone wanted to divide the question, they could. My sense is that the commission is heading towards unanimity. But I should, you know, one doesn't count one's votes. I think you could do them together. And if anyone objects, we'll divide them.
Why I move we adopt the mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program with the with the with the special mitigations that Jill has described having to do with lighting standards and that we approve the resolution of hand PDP nineteen zero five nine.
Seconded by Commissioner Holt. Is there any further discussion? Staff, do you have clarity on the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Roll call vote, please, Bridget.
Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Benjamin?
Yes.
That's an approach.
Thank you and congratulations. Karen, thank you so much. For all of the members of the Parks and Rec Commission, to the consultants and especially to our staff, we are grateful for your work and we're excited to see what is to come in that space. So thank you very much. With that, sorry.
Oh, thank you.
And with that, we have completed our public hearing items and we turn to the director's report. So Jill, you have the floor.
Your last meeting of the year. You are wrapping that up. And thank you so much for all your hard work this year. We would really enjoy seeing you with holiday cookies or something in the E O C. And we'll look forward to hopefully doing that next year. Very thin report from staff tonight. We will be canceling the Architectural Advisory Committee meeting for next week. The items just aren't ready and we want to give the architects enough time to prepare their best materials for the for that committee. So we are working on rescheduling to their regular time. We're planning to see you at your first meeting in January on, I believe it's January. Oh, help me, Bridget.
I don't even know.
I think it's the 12th. And so you've got a break and Commissioner Benjamin's going to share some information about a training thing that I I actually don't have that. So you'll need to tell your colleagues about that. I don't think I got that, or it's back at City Hall. Um, staff is predominantly working remotely again, having gone from one color to another and back to the the purple. So you'll notice that I think we're all home and we're going to stay home, but we are all working very hard. If you need us over the next couple of weeks, let us know. Our city hall will be closed December twenty fourth and then reopening on January fourth, Monday, January fourth. Staff's very fond of this commission and we've been thinking about you a lot. And we appreciate your services here. We know we have piled hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands of pages of documents on you. And you work so hard and you make it worthwhile and we love serving this commission. So thank you for that. We wish you whatever a happy holiday means to you or a happy break or enjoying a quieter winter season. So thank you so much.
Thank you for those very nice words. I know that the commission feels the same way with respect to you. All right, any questions on that director's report? If not, we turn to Commissioner Communications. So colleagues, do you want to tell us about anything? Yes, show and tell with Vice Chair Riddick.
Well, this is this is a small item, but I'm approaching the two year anniversary of serving as the planning commission's representative to the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And it's been really fun and the the B pack master plan was done and this time. But at the same time, I'm ready to move on. And I I've mentioned it tonight, just in the expectation that in January I could rotate out of that. And I mentioned it so you all can be thinking about whether that's something you'd enjoy.
Very good. Very good. Something for us all to think about. Anyone else? Well, I'll just weigh in briefly. One of the areas that has been a casualty of COVID and associated limitations this year has been training for the planning commission at least. And of course, we've had pretty full plates. We did manage to do some housing. What shall I call them? Forums perhaps at the library in San Mateo or Burlingame, I forget. But I wanted to point out every now and then they I get some interesting working flyer. And I can't tell whether it's a winner or not. But this is the, does that come in? You have to hold it up to like a mirror. Can you actually see it the way it's written?
Yeah, it's okay.
Comes back to me reversed, like if I'm dyslexic.
It's reading correctly.
All good. So this is, I noticed that the speakers include one of our shoot experts. Ken Ken Bundy is speaking on Sequo twenty twenty and that the courts are not on mute. It's a virtual conference as much as it would be fun to go to UCLA. It doesn't seem to be the right time for that sort of thing. But there is a website. You can see it there. And if you think it's interesting, you know, maybe one or more of us would want to would want to go. And I think it's two or three hundred bucks.
Can you read it to us, Jimmy, please?
Yeah, for the record, it's UCLAextension.edu/landuse.
Thank you.
And so it's their conference on land use law and planning. It's not one I've been to before, but I I'm always on the lookout for things that might be interesting. So I and if there are others that staff knows about that we should be thinking about, I am certainly interested. The only other thing I had to say today is that I think I am one of the commissioners whose four year term winds up this year. And I have no idea whether I'll be reappointed or not. So we'll find out about that next year. But I just wanted to say it has been an incredible honor working with you this year. I think we have a lot to be proud of. And saying more would be detracting from what I feel. So I'll just say thank you, Rick, for the work on the land use plan, the L C B Subcommittee. Thank you all for reading so tirelessly. Thank you, staff, for giving us the opportunity to make a difference for the city this year. And I know that however things work next year, it will be another great opportunity. And you have risen above a lot of challenges to get us here. You've kept us safe and you've managed to deal with a variety of incredibly difficult personal circumstances and do it with grace. So we are very grateful to you. All right. Having no further, oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I was just going to pile on to that. I'm one, the other commissioner that's for your term is up and similarly, I don't know if I'll be reappointed or not, or if I want to be. I I just wanted to reflect on, you know, four years ago, I think both Chair Benjamin and I were sworn in literally an hour or two after our outgoing president was sworn in. And it was, it was surreal on that day to to swear in at that same time. And it's been absolutely surreal for years. And I just want to say how much I appreciate functional local government and and staff and and just the good quality of work that that we do here at the local level and how important that is amidst some of the the chaos that we've seen on the national level. So I think this has been a safe space for us. So thank you, everybody.
Here, here. All right. Having no other items on our agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd move to adjourn.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Show of hands, please. That's unanimous. Thank you and good night. Meeting is now adjourned.
Take care, everyone.
Good night, all.